Too scared to drive circuit past Banbury.
Okay, Commissioners, again being sensitive to the time, let's reconvene now as the CRA and open up the call to order this work session of the CRA. The date is April 10th, 2023 still, and the time is 11:02. First item is the CRA 2023 Mid-Fiscal Year Budget Adjustments. Mr. Ruge, do you want to tee this up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Chris Ruge, Executive Director of the West Palm Beach Community Redevelopment Agency. Good morning, Mayor Commissioners. It's great to be with you today. It's hard to believe we're halfway through the fiscal year, but we are here, and this is something that we do on an annual basis. Things come up throughout the year, do projects, line items that need to be addressed. So, we have some items that we wanted to discuss with you as a body that both affect Fund 107, which is the Pleasant City Broadway CRA area. That's on the north end of our city. And then Fund 105, which is the Downtown City Center CRA, which includes the downtown core, the DDA area, the historic northwest, Nora and Clear Lake, down to Okeechobee Boulevard. So, we're going to go through some of these line items. The CRA Fiscal Manager, Deesa Campbell, will go through those items. They are one-time adjustments to our budget. Some of them require no movement of funds. They are simply reclassification, for reclassification purposes that help with the accounting of our books in order to keep them all in order. But at the end, if this board is comfortable with the budgetary changes that we are proposing, we will bring those forward at a special CRA meeting, tentatively scheduled now for April 17th, which is next Monday, just prior to the City Commission meeting. So, if there are any other questions, I would, Mayor, like to call our Fiscal Manager, Deesa Campbell, up to give the presentation.
Very good.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, Administrator Johnson. Deesa Campbell, Fiscal Services Manager for the CRA. As Chris mentioned, these resolutions actually stem from our budget resolutions in September, and these are items that just either reallocate monies previously budgeted based on changes in our assumptions, or they address new issues that have come up since the original budget was approved. So, we'll start with Fund 107, which is the Northwood Pleasant City CRA. These first two items are new appropriations that we are requesting. One is a $9,000 allocation for the servicing of sanitary equipment in the right-of-ways in Northwood Pleasant City area. And the second one is for a placemaking plan for the operations of Curry Park. And this will basically present to us information on how Curry Park, the operations of the park would look like so that the park is a self-sustaining entity as it is opened and offered services offered to the public. The following items will all be reclassifications. The first one is $35,000 reallocation that will complete the budgeting for an allocation for the Broadway mixed-use planning study. We previously allocated $250,000 for this project. This additional $35,000 will fully fund the 285 quote for that service. Next, we have the reallocation of $38,000 from our marketing budget that will be transferred to professional services. And this will allow us to engage a consultant to conduct a market study and potentially identify an urban grocer for the Northwood Pleasant City target areas. That area is currently a food desert, and the groceries desperately needed there. Next, we have, this stems out of our recent acquisition of the Higgins site. Demolishing of those buildings took place a couple of weeks ago, but once we got started with that project, we initially intended to tear down one of the buildings and maintain the site as it was. But things started to crumble. The asphalt thing was no good, so we ended up having to rip up the entire, demolish all the buildings, rip up all of the concrete foundations and asphalting, and to completely sod the property. So, this $50,000 allows for covering up the unforeseen work that was happening there, and it also allows us a little cushion in case we have to do anything else along that corridor prior to the end of the fiscal year. This item stems from a reclassification out of the 2022 audit, and this is just in continuation of that so that this continues to classify items for the Curry Park expenditure, Curry Park Concept and Design, from repairs and maintenance and operating expenses into a fixed asset line. And as I mentioned, this previous expenditures in the 2022 fiscal year have already been reclassified, so this will take care of the full budget for fiscal year 2023. So, as I previously mentioned, only two of these require new funding, and that will result in a $134,000 decrease in the reserves in Fund 107 between now and the end of the fiscal year, and we will be left with a remaining reserve of $202,000. We move on to Fund 105, which is the Downtown City Center CRA. The first item is a reclassification of funding that was previously allocated for the inter-transit modal center. So, we are reallocating the full amount of that money to Fund 139, which will cover repairs that have already been made to the Seaboard train station. I think those repairs were about $175,000, and then the balance of the 345 will allow for ongoing maintenance to that site until the end of the fiscal year. These are the two items that are similar to the Curry Park item. We have these classifieds are going to be reclassified from operating expenses to fixed assets. One is for the 300 upgrades to the 300 alley at Clematis, between Clematis and Banyon. That item was brought to the CRA in our last meeting and approved. So, this is just moving that those funds from operating expenses to fixed assets. And the second is a similar item, which involves a lighting project on Douglas Avenue from Second to Eleventh. The next several items are going to be new items that have arisen during the current fiscal year. The first one is to allow for a consultant for construction administration on the Nora project. The streetscape is, I think, about ready to break ground now, and we are going to assist engineering in providing in-house oversight of that streetscape construction. We had a request from the Police Department to fund various initiatives happening in that, in their offices now. First, we have $91,000 that will go towards various software platforms that increase police response time. The FUSE system allows for real-time transfer of commercial video into the Police Crime Center. They're looking for a social media platform that will allow them to identify and more quickly respond to threats into businesses in the downtown. License plate readers. And then, the second part of it is a $29,000 request for electric bicycles that will be used exclusively in the historic northwest district. The CRA is going to help with a summer jazz series on the waterfront that is going to be hosted by the Community Events Division. Our funding will cover entertainment, staffing, and logistics for that event. Mention was made earlier about the WPB Go initiative, which is a private sector, public sector initiative. The $50,000 here only is a placeholder right now, which provides initial funding from the CRA before any expenditures are made against that item, that entire project, and what the scope of work looks like. We'll come back to the board for approval. The next item is for the Subculture Alleyway at the 500 block of Clematis. This is for the installation of city cameras in that block. Again, this is a Police Department request, but the CRA will initiate the contract along with the PD, and expenditures will come directly from the CRA rather than transferring these funds to the Police Department and having them pay for it. We have been acquiring quite a bit of property in the historic northwest. Along with that comes the need to conduct various studies, surveying, topographical surveys, boundary surveys, environmental assessments. So, this $50,000 increases previous allocations of $50,000 and allows us to see our way through those types of services between now and the end of the fiscal year. You might remember that this item, Resolution 623, came before the City Commissioner a few weeks back, and this increase in funding relates historic services provided by PSC at the Sunset Lounge from August 2022 until March 6, 2023, when that resolution was presented. This $42,000 will allow for the shortfall in covering those retroactive services. Unfortunately, we've had some vandalism at Sunset at Hart and Soul Park, and so we need to provide for, we need to cover repairs and maintenance that are already needed there as a result of these things, torn awnings, damages to signs, paints on the furniture, and then that'll, it'll also allow for any items that may arise again between now and the end of the fiscal year. We recently acquired by foreclosure purchase the Hot Box Properties at 610 Douglas, which will be rehabbed, refurbished, and improved to provide affordable housing units in the northwest. Along with that purchase came the acquisition of $48,000 in city liens against that property. So, we will have to settle those loans once we take possession of the property and at the closing. So, this $48,000 allows that these are liens from the Public Utilities Department for water and sanitation services already rendered at that property. The next three projects are all new projects for the current fiscal year. 800 Nor Tambrun will provide a mixed-use building for commercial property at the bottom and affordable housing units on the second story. This is potentially for use for the Rose Trolley operations, once we have successful negotiations there. The next item is 708 Third Street, which is a contributing historical structure immediately west of the Fantasy Island project. Again, these will be rehabilitated, and the historical buildings preserved, and these will eventually also be used for affordable housing in the historic northwest. And finally, 623 Division Avenue will recreate the former Gwen Cherry residence in its historical form, and then also provide a second building on that site, which will be a more modern take on the historical structure. And the plan right now is for that each structure to provide two units of affordable housing. And how all three of these items are going to be addressed going forward, we'll all come back to the board for review and approval. Right now, these funds are only being allocated for concept and design and construction drawings. So, the sum total of all of these new initiatives for fiscal year 2023 will have the effect of decreasing current reserves by $1.2 million, basically, and will allow for a $2.2 million reserve going forward to the end of September 30th, 2023. At this point, we, as Chris mentioned, we will bring this back to the board on the 17th for formal approval. These are the CRA initiatives that are being addressed here, neighborhood stabilization, affordable housing opportunities, improvement of infrastructure, and the preservation of the historical fabric of the districts. And that would be the end of my presentation. If there are any questions, I can take them now.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Ward.
Can you go back to Fund 107 page, please?
Sure.
So, the addition of the servicing of the right-of-way cans, what's happening right now, and where is the need coming for this increase in funds?
So, the cans have been there, and they have all, they are being serviced, but previously Public Works was not charging us to service the cans. Beginning April, beginning this month, actually, they're now going to be charging us for these cans and for some in the historic northwest and the downtown area. And it's just budgeting issues.
So, it's like an oversight of why they weren't, I think I asked this before. I just was just making sure. So, it was just an offset that they weren't charging?
Yeah, I can answer that. There's been a number of, they've done a rate study about two years ago that determined that there should be a charge for right-of-way cans, particularly ones that are when they're added, because that's an additional expense to sanitation operations, whether it's the routing and picking them up, the cans themselves, the gas, personnel. So, they started to about a year ago begin to implement that, those charges.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you so much. I'm really excited to see the Douglas lighting project move forward. I think it's going to change the neighborhood dramatically. My question is about the vandalism in the Hart and Soul Park and also the PSC contract. While I'm very supportive of having additional security there, I feel like at some point, we also approved having cameras there, and I am just wondering, I know the PSC contract isn't an overnight contract, and we're not exactly sure when the vandalism is happening, but I feel like having cameras there might be a more appropriate way to kind of keep the area safe from those kind of issues that they're having. So, I just wanted to clarify. Did we not have cameras at some point, and are they going to be going up, or is that a Police Department issue?
Yes, thanks, Commissioner. Chris Ruge, Executive Director of the West Palm Beach CRA. We do have, or we did have money in the budget for cameras to keep an eye on Hart and Soul Park. Those are currently being installed by PD. And then, in addition to that, we're also beginning outreach efforts to the community to bring these matters to the community's attention in the neighborhood so that we can keep real-time eyes on the park, and if somebody sees something, giving them the contact information of where to report items or vandalism. And then, once we have the cameras, we can have a better idea of when these activities are happening. PSC is at the park now, but it's not occurring while they're there. So, we're trying to find out when these, when the vandalism is occurring and then address it accordingly.
Commissioner Ward.
Sorry, back to 107. The study on the grocery store, how is that in, I guess, cooperation with the private sector and the anchor site? What are they doing versus what are we going to do different?
So, thank you, Commissioner. Chris Ruge, Executive Director again. This was requested, we have, the anchor site is currently under, is under development, and the developer of that property has been reaching out to grocery store operators in an effort to lease the bottom space of the anchor site for a grocery store purpose. And so, he's working very, very hard, and he reached out. He said, "Chris, you know, I'm actively trying to recruit a grocer. Is there anything that you feel the CRA can do to help with these efforts?" And knowing that grocery stores have, you know, certain data that they look at, we thought we would illustrate the potential growth for the north end with all of the projects that are slated to come forward, and package that in a marketing study that really highlights the opportunity of what could be in the north end for a grocery store operator, and give the developer the tools and the information that he can then include as part of his leasing packets to potential operators. But in the effort that he is not successful, but we believe that he will be, in the effort that he's not, we still have that information to continue the marketing efforts, to really bring to the top of mind grocery store operators that this is a viable place for a grocery store, and that this is a great market that they want to get into now, knowing that in the future, you're going to have hundreds more units that are going to be available with, you know, paying residents and things like that, that is only going to benefit an operator, and really, the first one in is going to get the best position. So, really trying to highlight the opportunity in the north end, and that's the purpose of this study.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. Can you talk a little bit more about the placemaking study for Curry Park?
Yes, thanks, Commissioner Lambert. And we have Chris Bettencourt with Chenmore with us today, in case you do want more details that I don't cover in the explanation. But as part of the Curry Park concept plan and the scope that we hired Chenmore to work on for us, it included a placemaking plan, and that plan has been drafted, and it essentially highlights how the park will operate and be maintained moving forward. Part of the suggestions in the plan is how to make the park sustainable. And the purpose of the 125 that we allocated is to continue to work with Chenmore on actually structuring with the City Attorney and the City Finance Director, a structure of how we could essentially implement that plan. And so, it's the first step towards plan implementation, but we really need a lot more details and understanding about how we can make sure we're staying in line with the rules and regulations of the tax-exempt bonds that we used to build the park in addition to our grants. So, we need the consultant, along with Chenmore, to help sort of craft all of that. And then, the plan is, once we have all of that information, is to come back to this body for further direction on how to implement the placemaking plan, because the goal is to make that park sustainable so that it sort of supports itself and alleviates any parks and rec pressure for the general budget.
Thank you. I appreciate the research and time and effort that's going into that, because I know it'll be a very delicate balance and important. Do you have any idea of when that will be coming back to us? Just ballpark.
So, we intend to break ground on the park in about six months, and because we're racing that timeline, we want the placemaking plan to really be implemented by the time the park is finished. So, I think six months is accurate. So, I would say the fall of this year, we would have the study and general concepts. So, I think it's a tentative deadline, because obviously, there's a lot of details that need to be ironed out, but I would say, you know, judging by Chris's explanation, six months, we would be ready for that discussion.
I have another question.
Yes.
Thank you. And then, regarding some of the new projects, Deesa, that you mentioned, you mentioned that these will come back to the CRA Board. Can you just let us know in what, what shape will they come back to us?
So, for the new projects, as I mentioned, these allocations are only for concept design and construction drawings. These will have to be either rebid as a procurement item when we actually get moved to the construction phase. The plans will come for review and approval, and any, specifically with the Rose Trolley site, once we go through negotiations and we come, we have a meeting of the minds, that contract will also come back to the board for approval. Chris, do you need to add anything there?
Yeah, Commissioner, I mean, it all depends on which one you're referring to, but I think on some of the housing ones, the contractor to do the refurbishment or build the structure will go through our normal procurement process, but any purchase and sale or lease would have to come back to the board for approval.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions, comments? All right, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
All right, that's the only item on the agenda for this workshop. Commissioners, do you have any issues for the good of the order? All right, hearing none. First of all, let me thank you, Commissioners. This was a longer meeting than we normally have. It started earlier, so I appreciate your taking time out of your very, very busy schedules to help us work through some of those issues. So, thank you all very much, and have a great day. This meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.